Sorry, family, we're good to go. We appreciate everyone being here and appreciate everything you do. Thanks, Board, for being here and thanks for juggling your schedules tonight to be here a little bit early and also stay a little bit late later tonight.
Almost.
You didn't tell us that. He talked that part.
Yes, we did. You know, it was a busy night. First order of business, we have just a quick little discussion.
What's this?
For the past seven years, I have been a member of the Board of Trustees on the Ogden Leaver Technical College. My term on that is going to expire next month. So I spoke with Vice President Ritchie and Superintendent Butters, and we have appointed Jan Burrell to move into that position on that board. So congratulations.
Congratulations, Jan.
I'm honored. I love to attend those graduations. I'm excited to learn a little bit more about that.
It's a great thing. There's so many good things going on over there.
Good things happening there.
You'll enjoy it. Lots of good people.
For our ongoing kids.
Thank you. Let's move to some updates from Superintendent Butters.
Okay, thank you, President. Good evening, Board. It's great to see you all. We are going to start tonight with, as you know, we're going through quite a policy revision process in our district, and we're so fortunate to have those involved. Heidi Alder and we've got Heather Hardy, our compliance officer, they've been hard at work, and we're going to get up to date and up to speed. There's a lot of new policies that are in need because of the legislation of the last legislative session. So tonight, on your agenda, you can see the five policies we're going to walk through, and Heidi Alder's going to take us through those. And of course, the intent tonight is to get input as well as we go to first reading.
Okay, thanks for taking the time to look at these. We have five, and I wish I could say that next month there will be less, but there probably won't be. Many of the policy changes we're making are not substantive, and so we don't have to bring them to you, but some of them are, as we look through them and make sure that they're updated. Some of the policies, like I mentioned, are 20 years old, so it's a time that we do a comprehensive policy review. The five that I want, that we're going to, are ready for your review today are, I'll just read through each of them right now and then go through them one at a time and give you an opportunity to discuss and to ask questions, and I'll walk through and explain some of the changes. Policy 1130, which is about the board meetings, including a provision that we added and enhanced after this past legislative session, requiring all school boards to have a public comment period. Policy 4160, which is just some updates, some technical updates, some combination of a couple of policies. That's our residency and enrollment policy. Policy 4372, which pertains specifically to foreign exchange students and their placement in schools and graduation opportunities. 5220, which is our student code, student dress code policy. We mentioned that last month in study sessions, so unless there is anyone who really wants to talk about that one, we'll probably gloss over that real quickly. And then policy 7135, which is an HR policy dealing with LEA-specific licenses. So now that you know where we're going, let's rewind and just start with policy 1130. Policy 1130 is entitled "Board Meetings," and we did a couple of things with this policy. First of all, we reformatted it. We're trying to make every policy consistent in that it has a purpose and philosophy section, a policy section, definitions, and then we're also trying to update the font and the formatting numbers. And, I appreciate you saying that, because that is one of the reasons we're updating this, is because all of our policies over the years have been created by different departments, at different times, in different fonts, in different formatting. So one of the things you'll see is a consistency in formatting, and while the font might vary slightly, once we put it on our website, it will be consistent. The way the policy currently reads is to define a number of provisions that are currently in state law, the Open and Public Meetings Act. And so what I did was just put those in a definition section rather than having them stand alone off to the side, but numbered them and put them in a definition section. And within those definitions, I also included updates and information that is required under the Open and Public Meetings Act. And as we reviewed this policy, we looked at lots of different policies of other districts across the state, and some districts have the entire Open and Public Meetings Act operating as OPMA rewritten into their policy. Other districts have one simple sentence that says, "We comply with OPMA." I opted to do something in between and welcome your feedback. But included some of the more relevant definitions and procedures in the definition section, or says definition of procedures, and then added a section, if you take a look at Roman numeral four, which states basically, anything that isn't listed here, we're still complying with. So it's sort of a catch-all section, that this school district does comply with the Open and Public Meetings Act. And if it's not listed up above in the definitions and procedures, because I don't feel like it's necessary to rewrite what's currently listed and stated word-for-word in the law, but that clearly the board is going to comply with that. And there hasn't been a provision written into the policy, but it is required in the law that school boards get training on Open and Public Meetings Act on an annual basis. So I included that in the section four. Most of what's above, sections one, two, and three, is just reformatting what is already in policy, and it's simply a reflection of what is in the law. It is verbatim what the law requires in terms of what a quorum is, what a board meeting is, what an electronic meeting is. You're welcome to look through it, but it's nothing that is a policy provision. It is just restating what is in the law. The section that I think you're going to want to look at and welcome your feedback and discussion is section five. Section five is about public participation in meetings. And after this last legislative session, the bill that required schools to have public participation in meetings is what drove this provision. What goes into this section is entirely the Board's decision. So what, how the Board decides to take public comment, how many public comments to take, any time limitation, what topics, none of those specifics are identified in the statute, this law, this bill that just passed, and so that is up to the Board. And what we're presenting here today is a review of several different districts, some of the bigger districts around the Wasatch region, and how they handle public comments. And it's a combination of several that we thought we'd present to you and let you see if you think it's something that is workable, and certainly if there's any discussion or desire to change.
My only question was, like, I guess, like, you kind of answered it, but in that five, five and six, where it talks about three minutes and eight speakers, so that was just kind of an arbitrary, like, so did you look at other?
Yes.
Anyways, that was my question, like, is that what we want to go with, three minutes, eight?
Most districts will have a time limitation.
So like 30 minutes?
Yeah, some say 30 minutes.
Okay.
And just so you know, my reasoning, as I was going through this, I was thinking, well, if we had 15 people sign up and they each spoke for three minutes.
Yeah, it's all in twenty.
Then you cut them off at half an hour, I wouldn't, I would hesitate to make any member of the public feel like we're silencing you, because it's been 30 minutes. But if there's a clear notice at the beginning, this is how many people can speak because of our time limitation, then everyone knows and is the first aid to sign up. But it is an arbitrary, it's something that you've got to make a decision.
Heidi, I think, I think the 24 minutes is great, because we will use 30 on that. You can be guaranteed, nobody's going to stay right to that three minutes. Even if you give them a clock, they're going to go over a few seconds anyway, so I like that.
So Heidi, how do you regulate, do you sign up first?
So we have a couple of different ways we can do it. Some districts have an online sign-up, and we actually met with our tech, whatever our tech department was, Jeff's title, Jeff Brooks.
He is a programmer over websites and kind of our public-facing.
And he explained that he can create a place on the website that will also appear on the public meeting website, that people can sign up electronically. We can also have a clipboard paper out here. If we don't have eight sign up online in advance, people can sign up if they come in.
So what if they come here and there's already eight signed up? Is that a?
I'm a little concerned. Right, no, I understand that it's something.
I want to survive. That's the education part, like, how to let people know.
And this was the answer, like, kind of the thought about you, because I talked to the President of the Board, Davis Board, today, and they said they had started at three minutes, and then they reduced it to two minutes so that they can allow for 15 people.
Yeah.
So that's an option, that we could vary it like that.
Definitely.
I would start with three, and if we need to change the policy in a year, I mean, three minutes is short. I just had a little niece that was speaking in Baltimore, and she called to pass her speech by me, and I said, "Oh, Addie, if you go over 10, 10 seconds, it won't matter." And she said, "Oh, they just turned the mic off." I was like, "Oh, that's a little harsh."
There's an option.
But that's interesting.
Is it in the policy? I mean, I could read it, but I can't remember. I didn't make a note. Are we timekeeping? Is there someone who's set to timekeeper?
It'll be on the time schedule.
No, but I mean, is that set, like, who's the timekeeper? And are we going to just play it?
Pam is usually.
I have.
Okay.
It's normally on screen.
Oh, right.
So if we do have a time, then we need to adhere to that.
I guess the thought there, Heidi, on my part, would be, the policy says that something repeats within the same comment, it can be stopped, so it's not repeated. So when you look at those numbers in that time, if there's something that big, then we need to do something a little different, you know what I mean?
Right.
But a majority, past experience, that a majority is good work, not a good work. In the past, it's always been repeated several times, that same complaint, when we've already heard that. It's in the policy. Is that, am I not correct?
It just said if there was a, sorry, it said if there was like a group, like an organized group that wanted, so I think that's different than you have three different citizens who aren't affiliated that all want to speak on the same thing. I don't think you can stop that, because they're speaking to their own experience. I don't know, I don't know that I love the eight people, like, if we want to say 30 minutes max up and say it will stop at 30 minutes even if you're signed up, I don't know.
I think we adhere to the clock and...
Then you have 10.
That, that's six minutes I can promise to be used on.
If people come to them.
Well, it takes that long to stand up and sit down.
Because that'd be part of your time.
Three, eight, back, three minutes, that's 24 minutes.
But it will take their own message, probably.
Also, we, and I was supposed to, everybody's been just talking about this, not picking their brains.
Your mic's not on.
I was supposed to, as I was picking their brains, and one of the, they really emphasized was, it's not a time to engage. You're listening, if we start on dialogue with them, they, like, that'll take the time, because it's just a listen, it's not engage. And they said that's really challenging, because they'll ask questions, they'll point and they'll say, "What do you guys think?" And then you're sitting there mute, you know, because you're not engaging, and so we have to be prepared for that.
One thing that I...
We have to be very clear that we're...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think you have to hear a statement beforehand.
Policies include, and I got it here, that the Board President will remind the public of the guidelines, and one of the guidelines is, this is not a question and app or session.
We could draft a short paragraph that kind of explains to the public how this works back and forth a little bit, so they kind of know, but we want them to know that if there's a problem, that we can take care of it in the school district. Board meeting's not necessarily the place to take care of the problem, and the Board's not necessarily the people to take care of the problem. And so I think maybe a draft of a little paragraph that explains, I don't know exactly what the wording would be, but kind of lets them know, we'd love to help them, but this may not be the best place.
On Davis School District's, their website, their board website, it has a really good explanation for the public comment period, so I don't think it, maybe not in the policy, but our board website...
There's our process, right?
Yeah, yeah, ours isn't quite up to date, but if, I was really pleased, theirs is well explained, so I think if we looked at that and kind of replicated it, because most people, if they're going to sign up, they're going to go to the, to that portion of the website to look at the rules, and so if they can read it and then click sign up, I think that's, but anyways, I like how Davis...
Yeah, that may be, that may be a good starting point, of course, to see what they have.
I think Davis has learned from that experience.
Yeah.
So Heidi, speaking of that, who makes the determination on when the agenda, we put that?
That would be the Board, and I don't believe it's listed in here right now.
I didn't see it in there.
No. Now, it is something probably should go in there at what point of the meeting.
It seems like in the city council meetings, it's usually at the beginning before they get into business.
And I would prefer that it's at the end of our meeting. And the reason for that is I'd like them to listen to the good things that are happening, because most of the public comment is a negative input, and I'd like them to hear the recognitions, the teachers, the kids, the students, the portion that we take care of in business that they're not going to hear.
Which is a good point, because like I said, at the city council meetings, I've done too, the people who want to rant, come in, they rant, and they leave.
Yeah, and that's the issue, and when I was, same thing, when I was fire chief, I heard that, and it really knocks you down, because we're doing good things. And we might have an issue that President already mentioned that says, "Listen, that ought to be handled by the superintendent delegating it to an administrator to get it resolved."
Unless it's something that they want to speak to that's on the agenda for that day, that would be the only thing that I would be concerned about.
But a policy, we always do a first reading and a second reading, so they should come to the first reading, make their comment.
No, but I mean, like, if they, if whatever they want to comment on is something that's being addressed in that board meeting, is what I'm saying, and if they don't get to comment till the end of the meeting, then maybe they feel like they're not being listened to.
And some of the decisions are made by the end of the meeting.
Yeah, that's...
So I...
Like, I get full sight of that, but I think maybe...
But again, the purpose for that meeting, that Robert kind of explained, that I agree with, is we're not in a debate or a rebuttal against them, we're simply listening.
Yeah, this is a business meeting.
It's our business meeting.
To conduct the business, and some of it's time-sensitive, so we've got to get it done, you know, Robert?
In the R districts, they have it after their recognitions and presentations in the board and before their action items. That's common.
Throughout that, throughout the agenda, before their action item, or just at the beginning?
It's right before the action items happen, and it's after the recognitions and presentations.
So mid-meeting.
I like that.
It's gonna be okay.
Yeah, that, I think that kind of solves a little bit all of the problems of interest in the question.
They can add that to the procedures.
Because I do think your point's valid, I think the recognitions and the presentations are important for people to see what, as opposed to just ranting and leaving, but before action.
We had a good example of that a couple of years ago, when there was a group of attorneys from an entity that wanted to sue the district, and they sat through the whole meeting, and it was a good, it was a recognition meeting, and afterwards, they had a little bit softer approach to us, because of all the good things that had happened.
I feel like the object of public comment is to connect us with the public and to make, allow them to feel like they're being heard, it's on record, and that we're appreciative for them caring enough to come and to comment. So I, as much as I love our meetings, I don't know that if they want to make a comment, they should be required to sit through two hours' worth of great stuff. And I agree, it's great stuff, but I don't want to discourage the public from stepping forward and being involved. I think it's critical if we're going to be a strong, involved district.
Yeah, that's maybe if we look at it this way, maybe if they really want to be involved, they're going to show their involvement by their willingness to be here and spend the time to be involved.
I think that's the point, if we do it after recognitions, before action. I do have another question, though.
Thank you, Bruce.
For public hearing comments, is there a time limit on that, because it's not in the policy, or is it just as long as it goes?
It depends on the statute, so there are certain laws that require public hearings, yeah. Public hearing's different than a public...
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments? Yeah, please.
I'm looking at the policy now.
Where are you looking, Janice?
I am, I have a copy of it, it says, "The public participation at board meeting."
That's...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so under procedures, it says that they have to sign up at least 24 hours ahead. Am I reading that incorrectly? Am I reading that wrong?
That's for the electronic sign up.
But I think that's what you're saying, if they don't fill up to eight, then we'll have a sign up sheet here, right?
Yeah, and we can write that in so it's more explicit.
I think that needs to be clarified, I would suggest that.
Number one shows that.
So something to the effect that patrons who sign up online must just 24 hours in advance, if there is available space, then others can sign up.
Yeah, we may be able to clarify in there, because of what number one says, and then what number four, maybe we need to put something in there to clarify that the electronic sign up would take precedence. Is that, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
Yes.
If they sign up, if we get the register fold electronically, there won't be a clipboard at the meeting.
That was the anticipated intent, yeah.
Is public comment, I know you said they have to list the schools their children attend, I know in public hearing, anybody can comment, so in pub, in public comment, do they have to have a child in the district?
It's up to the Board.
I would, I would hope not, since the vast, everyone's paying their taxes, and we, you know, whether, I've had people apologize to me, "I'm really sorry that I'm interested. I don't have any kids, I don't have any..." I said, "Are you kidding? You are the community, and this school is affecting every one of us, and we're all paying taxes." So I love that it started out and it says, I think it says citizens, doesn't it, or it says, what's the term, Pam?
What did you say, resident?
I definitely...
Teacher.
To me, I think they ought to have to live in our town.
I do, too, because we've had that during truth and taxation, where they brought everybody in, not even our district.
No, I agree, our county.
Or some roving protest.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking, so they ought to be able to identify at least the area they live in.
Perfect, yes.
Because it's got to be in our district.
Yes.
Because again, it's not a sounding board for complaints and stuff like that, I don't want it to become that session.
Or is that, they can comment, not like anybody can comment?
It's not, the statute's pretty short, actually, it is pretty short, but we can take out if you want, under Roman numeral five, letter V, number four.
Yeah.
Where it does say, "The schools their children attend," we can either take that out entirely or experience that at all.
I think they said something, did you say, like, the area you live, or just...
I'd like to know the school and the area they are in.
I was going to say, I don't think we want to take that out.
I don't either.
They don't have a child, all I can say is I don't have a child in the district.
Okay.
Yeah, and that works as well.
The schools their children attend if applicable.
There you go. Or the area where you...
I want to know that they live in our district.
I do, too.
But I don't want somebody necessarily from Ogden City Schools.
I agree, yeah, totally, yes, it should be, it's just that they should not feel that their opinion is inferior, because they don't happen to have kids or grandkids in the school, you know, they're...
But I think they ought to live in our district.
I agree.
We can just qualify that by saying the school of their residence.
Of their residence.
Number seven, it says, "Students, parents, guardians of current students, residents of the official district."
Thanks, Heather.
Current employees of the district.
Perfect, thanks. Thank you. This is why, because you work here, too, that takes care of them.
What happens when somebody speaks out, like I'm doing right now, for example? What's, what's in the policy there? Because when I taught school, that'd happen, we went to board meeting once, or somebody would just, woo, let it go. What, what do you do there?
I think that's our starting design.
That's where they're escorted out of the room.
There is a guideline, this...
You do have that, okay?
Yes.
When that happens, the fire marshal goes and takes them out.
See number one, you can just comment from the public, the audience is perfectly in it.
Okay. That's Dave Helder's from State.
I was thinking Clyde Moore. He's the biggest guy we got.
Yeah, if there aren't any other comments, I'm going to get the notes from Pam, and I'll put together, kind of incorporate your feedback.
Thank you.
And send it back to you.
May I ask one question, and I don't think we're, I don't know that we're prepared to do this now, they can sign in electronically, can, are we ready, we've got incredible capabilities, are we ready for comments electronically, online?
I think that's, that's a good question. Technically, I don't know if we're prepared for that, but there were other boards, other districts that prohibited online comment and required the speakers to be present, and I did incorporate that, I thought I incorporated that in the policy.
And I agree with that, Heidi, I totally agree with that. The same thing, if they're going to spend the time and want to be involved, they need to be here.
I would agree.
If it's not in there, I'll add it, but I think that there is a provision for it to be...
Heidi, on section five, C4, we need to fill in that blank, who people need to address their comments to via email.
And that's regarding personnel, more personal confidential pieces, right?
Right, and I think that the appropriate person would be HR to have comments regarding personnel issues go to Human Resources.
Human Resources, or two...
That's great, that's great.
Is that good?
Okay.
Yeah. Is that okay with the Board?
You just stick on the landline.
And of course, the, the communication with the superintendents, so, yeah.
Okay, moving on to policy 4160. This is our residency and enrollment policy, and this went to the Board about two or three years ago, so there's not a lot of significant updates, but as we were going through our policies, we realized that there are several policies that can be combined into one. Some of our policies are all of one paragraph, and they haven't been updated in 20 years, like I said. One of those is in section four, and this is more than one paragraph, but there is a standalone policy currently, is policy 4140, that talks about age entrance requirements, and how old the child has to be in order to be enrolled in our schools. And because this entire policy is about enrollment, it seemed to make sense to just take that policy and incorporate it into 4160. So that's the only change, there's nothing different in this policy than what already existed in 4140, we just added that piece. And then the next section, in Roman numeral five, letter V, where it says proof of residency, this is a new component. Our student services do a really good job of training our registrars regarding what parents or guardians need to show when they come to enroll students, what they have to, what they can use to show proof of residency, and we didn't have it, we don't have it anywhere in our policies. And we thought it would be a good idea to provide notice to the public what it is that they can bring to demonstrate residency in our district. And so this is just a reflection of what we're already doing in terms of the documentation that people can bring to demonstrate that they are residents of our district for purposes of enrollment. And then the last change in this policy, if you flip over to the, sorry, they're not numbered next to them, we'll number them. The page that has some pink strike out, the section is students who live in our boundaries but their parents live outside of the U.S. We have lots of different scenarios where legal guardian and student lives here in the boundaries, we have legal guardian lives in Utah, but the student lives in our boundaries, but the legal guardian lives maybe in St. George. We also have scenarios where parents live out of state, and their kids are living here with an aunt or an uncle or something. And we have scenarios where parents live out of the country and their kid lives in our boundary. For all intents and purposes, we have been treating out of state, out of country the same, in that application is submitted to an out-of-state boundary committee, and as we were looking at this policy, I was looking at it, realizing that if we treat students out of country different than students whose parents live out of state, it could result in some unintended discrimination practices. And since we're already treating the same, any, any parent who does not live in Utah applies to this boundary, out-of-state boundary committee, we're doing that even with parents who live out of the country, we just, we just need to update our policy and make sure that we're not engaging in unintended discriminatory practices. So that, those are the changes in policy 4160. Any questions about that? The next policy is 4372, and I'm going to hand out, not all the complainingers, but this, this policy is entitled "Graduation Policy for Foreign Students," and one of the other, we had a graduation policy, and I'm handing it out now, we did put it in the packet, because it's not something we're changing right now, but I did want to submit to the Board and ask if you all felt like it would be better to combine. and ask if you all felt like it would be better to combine this policy, which is specifically, forty-one seventy-two is specifically about foreign exchange students and their opportunity to graduate, but we do have a graduation policy. And so at one point, our internal policy committee, this is me and Heather and our paralegal, thought that it might be a good idea to just combine our graduation policy with this small piece, and you can see policy forty-one seventy-two, or excuse me, forty-three seventy-two is pretty short, it's not lengthy. All it says is students here on a foreign exchange program do not graduate, they are here for a one-year educational experience, they can get a certificate of completion, but they don't graduate. And so that, that is in essence what this policy says, but does it make more sense to combine this policy with our current graduation policy and just have this be another section in that policy?
I like that, I like that.
Okay, and it, our paralegal already did it, she sent me an email yesterday and said, look, I combined these, and I'm like, oh, great, our board's reviewing it tomorrow. So that, that'll be no problem, on second reading, we'll just bring it to you, it will substantively not change, it will be the same words, it will just be added to our graduation policy.
I'm sorry to ask the question, Heidi, because I was always managing this.
Yes.
So, so that it will remain the same in that they cannot graduate.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
They, they can get a certificate of completion, because that would be a nightmare for any counselor trying to navigate through that.
Yes.
Because I don't think we, you know, we're gonna have.
They, they cannot get through the.
They can't get through all of the graduation credits, and it does make sense to put it in that graduation policy, because that's where we discussed the credits.
They will try to convince you that, oh, but this filled that, and this filled that, and this filled that.
Janice.
It was a nightmare.
You can just point to that policy. Okay, then we'll make that change and present it on second reading. The next policy fifty-two twenty is the student dressing grooming standards, we talked about this last time, there have been no changes since it was introduced at study session last month. If you have any questions, we can talk about those now, if not, we'll just present it at fourth reading in the board meeting. Just to, to recall, to your recollection, that point of this policy was to create a consistent and uniform approach to how we are addressing RSCO in the district. Okay, last is an HR policy, this is policy seventy-one thirty-five. In, I'm, I'm sure you know, because it's actually on our board agenda, we have LEA specific licenses, where we can issue a license for a period of time until the employee goes through and establishes the requirements to then get an associate license and then a professional license. The State Board of Education at one time was capping the number of years that an LEA specific license could be renewed at, at three years. And that State Board of Education rule was just recently changed, such that now it's reviewed on a case by case basis every time. And so theoretically, someone on an LEA specific license could apply for a renewal to the State Board five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten times, and the State Board could renew it every time. And in order to prevent that from happening, we incorporated a provision in this policy specifically on the second page, the second green, down here underneath four D, where it says an educator who has not obtained their associate license by the end of their third year may not advance on the salary schedule. So this just prevents the situation of having an indefinite LEA specific license for someone who's not doing the, going through the process of getting an associate license. If they haven't received an associate license by the end of the third year, then they won't advance on the salary.
Will they continue to teach that?
Does it have, will they be non-renewed, or would they?
No, they can continue. Right. Is there like a deadline for that, like, so they can just continue to teach, but not advance? Well, like, but it not advance on salary?
Yeah.
And that, is that normal?
Yes.
That's pretty typical, what's happening around the state, isn't it? Pretty cool.
So they wouldn't be able to?
I mean, that.
They do have, our district has a policy, they have five years.
Okay.
So after five years, if they have not done it at all, then they would not.
Is that, is that separate from this policy, or should it be in this policy?
Is it in here?
Because I don't think I, well, maybe I read it, I read a lot of things.
I don't. There are.
Or maybe add it to that bullet point?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, it's not in here.
Can't advance a salary schedule, but after five years, they will be non-renewed.
Right.
As an employee, does that make sense?
We can have that. On the other changes are just minor modifications. At one point, we had designated a district, call them specific types of mentors, but rather than use that terminology, because we have other employees who act as mentors, we just changed it to our mentor, so nothing that changes anything in terms of what we're doing, but just matching the language of the policy to our practice.
I have to, okay, so I found the must, must.
Okay, yes.
It was under four A, it just says an applicant must, colon, and then under I, it says must again.
Thank you.
That's me being like.
No, no, that's good.
But then my other question was under five B, it says the board considers the following factors when reviewing applications for, anyways, it says under I, it says rationale, and this is me being new, but I know we have a list of LEA, but I guess as a board, when I'm, it's part of the policy that we see the rationale for those appointments, so do we need to be adding that? I mean, I know it's in our consent calendar, but, I mean, I look at it and I'm like, well, I don't know anything about any of these specifically, but if it's on the policy, should we be receiving rationale?
I think we could add some bullet, some, some pieces that would speak to the rationale, it's different sometimes based on the school or the setting that they're being hired into, or there's a greater need in the specific content area.
But I think it's good before we approve it to be able to see.
But there's a committee that does that, is that clear?
Right, but if it's part of the policy, but we should be seeing the rationale before we.
Maybe the, the committee could submit with the.
Or it could just be in the memo.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's great.
So you just want like specific information about why that person needs an LEA?
Yeah, because the policy's saying that we should be receiving that rationale, but right now, we're just seeing names.
That's a great point, that's a great point, we can add this.
I can just add that to the sheet that I sent Pam, that you need to receive, the, yeah. Okay, that's all I've got, please, we'll do this again in forty-five minutes.
Heidi, Heather, thank you, those are awesome, the call, Loring on the, on the LEA piece, thanks.
Robert Peterson, please.
I'll just turn the timer on to Matt Dougell real briefly, we'll take five minutes or less, but he, he passed a handout, and we're organizing a local building authority, I misspoke when I told Gina, and now I've learned since then that it's not a municipal building authority, but a local building authority, is that right? And, and so Matt, take it away.
Thanks, Robert.
Welcome.
Thank you, oh, turn it on, no, thank you, well, it's lovely to be here, five minutes sharp, I will, I promise to get through.
Now turn the timer off.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, Matt, that was.
No, actually, I'll try to stick to three minutes. I, I, I think back to my first tool that I got, and I remember all it had was a standard screwdriver. Today, we're gonna talk about a Phillips head screwdriver. If you go into your packets and turn to the page right after the current page, basic governmental bonding, there are lots of different types of bonds that people shoot with my basic vehicle, they can be used for local government and special districts. However, for school districts, there's one, general obligation bonds. And what we're talking about today is that Phillips head screwdriver. Not necessarily that you have to use a Phillips head screwdriver, but it's, it's nice to have it in your toolkit. And this is a local building authority, it's a statutorily created avenue that I would say the majority of districts within the state of Utah have created. There are a few that haven't, and some of the very small districts have not created a local building authority. But this is a statutory opportunity wherein you can issue bonds through the local building authority. The bonds take a different format than your general obligation bonds, and the information I provided walks through the difference between two types of bonds, there is, there is a difference. But this is, especially in a growing economy, a growing state, and where you pass an election and construction costs go above and beyond maybe what was approved by voters, that's probably the most common occurrence where I've seen lease revenue bonds be issued in the state of Utah. That vehicle is available to, to you once it is created, and you can finish projects that you promised to voters. So really, I just wanted to speak to the process on page ten, what is the process? It is a two-meeting process to create this Phillips head screwdriver, and, and today on, on the agenda, the board will consider a resolution for creating the local building authority. The legal format, it is a not-for-profit corporation, and by virtue of that, there are articles in the corporation that must be approved with the resolution, and corporate bylaws, and those are filed with the Division of Corporations with the state of Utah, like they do not for profit. But the second meeting, you will come back in June, and you will elect officers of the local building authority, and that will be the board, and then it is created, and you have the opportunity to use it in the future. It's not saying that it has to be exercised or utilized, but again, it is that Phillips head screwdriver in your toolkit. I think that leaves me about two minutes, are there any questions? That was a very quick explanation.
Great, Paul.
Thank you.
Paul, thank you, Matt, Paul, when we approve the resolution, it will need a roll call vote. And so then just turn the timer on, and I'll throw a roll call vote on that, if you can remember. If you can't remember, I will.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, all right.
I'll get a little jostling from both sides here.
Okay.
But the information I provided in your packet does give a little bit more background on how the legal structure of lease revenue bond, how it works, so maybe the individual can answer any questions you have. Was that five, I think it was five, great, next?
Thank you. Robert, do you have any additional that you'd like to, do you want, do you want to explain to them why we, this is a consideration?
Well, the, as Matt said, sometimes, especially if there are construction cost overruns, they exceed, and it's a way to raise revenue as to this building authority, and should it be needed, which it's going to be needed, but it's, it's a tool, our toolbox, as Matt said, that we can raise the revenue and complete projects that we promised to voters.
For Roosevelt. Yeah, let's just be honest, it's about trying to finish Roosevelt.
And Roosevelt's in place, it's, it's in place for decades, it could be used in the future, you know, for.
So once we would do that, we'd still have an office.
So that's why I don't say just a school, because it's a tool that can be used in the future if needed.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, okay, thank you, President. And just in the interest of time, I know we're gonna have a big crowd outside the door waiting to come in with all of our recognitions and scores, I've, I've got a, a couple of updates that I need to give you around the audit that took place on Weaver, you know, Weaver, for Weber School District at the end of 2022, there's an annual reporting that must be done, and I, I completed that, and I will be sharing that with you, I would have gone into a little bit more detail tonight, but I want to make sure we have a little break for, for board members, and also allow our, our public to come in. So if you're okay with that, I will send that to you via email, and if you have any questions, let me know. Okay.
Wonderful, that's five minutes early.
I know.
Well, we'll see everybody back at six o'clock, or a couple minutes before, thank you.